So I got you upside. I want to welcome everybody to the September regular scheduled council meeting. Thank all of our visitors and all of our citizens here in attendance and everyone that's watching via our social media accounts. We're gonna open up with our prayer and our pledge. I ask Mr. Watkins if you lead us in prayer.
Let's pray. Father, I thank you again for the day. I praise you, Lord, for the blessings we've received. I pray, Father, that you give the council wisdom as they discuss business tonight. Father, may we all be a reflection of you. Again, I'll tell you, beloved, we praise you. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Face the flag, will you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Golden, Mr. Lau, Mr. McKinnney, Ms. Miller, Ms. Ray, Mr. Williams, Mr. Woods.
All right, thank you. I did speak with Ms. Ray before the meeting. She had a doctor's appointment that told her to go home and get some rest, so she did. I did hear from her before the meeting. She's not able to join us, so we'll be praying for her speedy recovery. I have one set of minutes to approve from our August regular scheduled council meeting. Is there no any changes or anything today? I'll ask for a motion to approve those minutes. Motion by Mr. Lau, second by Ms. Miller, if you will catch your votes. Motion, Care. Next, we have, under my report, I have a few things on here. I'm Patriot Day. I'm not gonna steal Leon's thunder. I'll let him bring that up on Memorial Day, I mean, September eleventh. Offices will be closed on October fourteenth for Columbus Day. I need to reschedule the council meeting that, since the offices will be closed, that's our normal regular scheduled council meeting. So is everyone okay with rescheduling the council meeting for the, to the fourteenth? I'm sorry, hold on, wait a minute, I said it wrong. The meeting after that. It's on the fourteenth, to the twenty, twenty first, yes. Yeah, we won't be here either, Larry. No, it's September. Go to October. Move over. So we can do the, how is the seventh for everybody? Or the, move it up? The seventh works for everybody? Is that good? I didn't check. That's good, Careb? Okay, all right, so the seventh, we'll do the seventh for our council meeting. For the council meeting that we have to reschedule. I'll go ahead and let you guys know the dates for the barbecue blowout, October twenty fifth through the twenty sixth. We'll have the mayor's luncheon at twelve on the twenty fifth, so I encourage you guys to come after that, and you'll start hearing a whole lot more about it as we get closer to that. I got a few things. I think I, Caroline, take one down and pass it now. I think I emailed this. Well, Sarah or Careb, somebody emailed it to y'all. I don't know. I think y'all got that, but I wanted to get it out in the community. We started along with, you got, okay, Police Department Chief Jones and I started a Safe Streets Initiative and tried to do what we can for community awareness. We put three parts to this. First thing, I didn't get dates, but I'm gonna get some dates for you guys. We're gonna have, I'm just calling them neighborhood block parties, catching little themes, how the police department come out, we're gonna grill, and we're gonna actually go into the communities. I'm looking at having four of those, so I'll get dates to you guys where we'll have, that we can go out, hang out in the community, talk to the citizens, and not just about crime, but this will be sponsored through the police department. That's the first part of the initiative. Second part, we, we're working on, I think, well, I know Todd and Larry was up here, but we had Code Red. We've re-initiated that and got it focused more, well, not more focused, all on the city, so we'll have the Code Red subscription. We've actually started, I think, training is the twelfth, and we'll, you'll hear more about that also, but that'll be a way to alert citizens of what's going on. Not with just crime, but if there's a street block because water, a water line is down, or whatever it is, there's gonna be a way that we can be more in touch with our citizens when it comes to notifications from the city. Also, the tip line there, which we've, we've had, we had this tip line for a while, people don't really use it, but wanna encourage the citizens to use that tip line. It's all confidential, so if somebody wants to report illegal activity, or just wanna report some concerns with anything that's going on in their neighborhoods, that tip line is available there as well. And then the last portion of all of it, the initiative, is the task force that we've put together with Chief Jones, Busta Gata Berking. And what this task force is doing is basically identifying and going out to some of the people that we know that's dealing in criminal activities and focusing on the drug convictions, felony convictions, and trying to get some of these people off the streets. So we're paying overtime for them. We're short in police department, as y'all already know. We've been short for, I guess, for, since I've been mayor. We've been short for a while with policemen, so some of the monies that we're, where we're short on officers, we're using some of that money for overtime to get extra guys on the street, as well as the Tennessee Highway, what is it called? Mike, I'm gonna say this wrong. Highway Safety Grant that we get to pay overtime and to pay the guys to come out to do extra patrol. So doing extra patrol in the communities, I'll show y'all this one of the bust they did over the weekend. I was real proud of it. I don't know what half that stuff is, but it's illegal, so a whole bunch of prescription drugs. Yeah, scripting drugs and start a lot of stuff they got off the streets, I think, one day, I don't know when, but they've made some, already made some pretty big felony arrests, recovered a couple of stolen vehicles, so proud of them guys, and I think they've done maybe four shifts, I think, Mike, five shifts. It may not have been that many, but five shifts, but it's been good, basically. Long story short, it's been good, but I wanna keep that going. But I wanted to let y'all, and I know we sent the official press release, but I also wanted to tell y'all about it again, so hopefully it'll help with, I'm sorry. Hopefully it'll help keep down some of the criminal activity, keep our numbers. I don't, it's not really put out as much as I would like it to be put out, but our violent crime numbers have been down. A lot of our reports and stuff have been down in the last few years, and those are not numbers from us. That's from TIBRAS, am I saying that right? From the federal government, TBI, so that's always, I'm always proud of that. Just wanna commend them on that. A lot of times, we hear the bad, we don't hear the good, so I wanted to take time to mention that. So any questions, anything on the Safe Streets Initiative?
Yeah, I just wanna, I'm sorry, go ahead. Sorry. I just wanna say, you know, y'all know I'm in law enforcement, and so having a holistic approach like this is, is great. I commend Chief Jones, the mayor, whoever was a part of this. These are crime drivers, drugs, guns, stolen cars, or crime drivers to more serious crimes, so when you get this off the street, it stops the rest of it. So I commend everyone that was involved. This is a great initiative. We've been short reallocating. The money is a, it's a great idea for this, so this is awesome. I'm glad to see this.
Thank, thank you. Thank y'all for y'all's support on it, so hopefully we'll see a lot more of that and get the word out that if you're dealing in drugs, don't come to Ball. Lock you up. All right, if you see the judge, ask the judge to keep him in jail. That's a whole nother topic, but anyway, I'm sorry, I probably shouldn't have said that. Last thing, I have two or three of the, two or three council members has reached out to me about political signs in the historic district in downtown and throughout the city. I will, let me tell you guys, the, all the council members that I spoke with, I thought it was, under my understanding, that it was against our historic zoning, as well as throughout the city, to have political signs in our historic district. I looked it up. I haven't found it anywhere, and I've chartered, neither has Careb. We also spoke with Tom at Southwest. He's our plan, and he handles Historic Commission and Plan and Commission, and there are no, no regulations against that, and I know, not to pick on Mr. McKinnney, but I know.
Yeah, I like my, I like my sign back, that's true.
Yeah, well, I didn't, I know that I didn't take it. That wouldn't mean. So, but that's, that's, that's been the, seriously, he didn't do, but that is.
As we know, rules are rules until the person who's in charge of the rules, now they wanna put their signs up.
So I, I will tell you guys, I, it's up to you how y'all want. Handle it. There's nothing the board can do before the next election is up, that election cycle is up. So if it's something that you guys want to see, I don't mind putting that, going, you know, sending that through the, I can actually turn that over to Ms. Miller to handle through the Historic Zoning Committee.
Consider it handled.
Well, we ain't decided. That's what we wanted to. But, but like I said, I know a lot of you guys called. We had a lot of citizens call. I, I didn't know. I just knew that's what I thought the rules were, but there's no, nothing against it. There is, I will say, the regulations now, they cannot be erected within, before thirty days of the election and shall be removed forty-eight hours after the election. No, so technically, every political sign that's in Ball right now, our public right of ways are illegal, because thirty days from early voting would be Tuesday, like six to sixteenth.
Does that matter if it's a primary, like should you put your signs out, and then after the primary, you have to take them down and put them back out?
Well, see, I, I've never been a part of the discussion on this board, but me and Ricky talked about it. Me personally, I don't know that it makes sense to take, you know, in a primary to take, put a sign up and then take it down before the general election. I, that's, that's my personal opinion, but technically, by our code here, and I don't really care to send Ricky and our, any of our employees out to go pick up all the political signs of any, of any candidate, and when technically Tuesday, they'll be legal anyway. But I just, I know the discussion is being had. I'm having a lot of calls, so I wanted to just put it out. That's why we haven't did anything, because technically, nothing is in violation except but the thirty days before the election. Now, if you guys wanna, I would say for this election cycle, leave it alone, and we can just deal with it, you know, and our next, you know, I'll go through the Historic Zoning Committee, our Plan and Commission, and then further this full board, but I, I'm sorry, I didn't take the signs, Larry. I know. I just wanted to let you know.
I mean, I didn't have a problem. It's not the individual. I didn't have a problem with the individual signs, but I'm, I'm just a firm believer that right is right and wrong is wrong. If you're gonna treat one one way, you should treat the other person. That's just the way I was raised. And I just know they took my sign up, and they told me it was a rule, but that's good. That's fine. I have no problem. So when I run it next time they take it, I just see them up at federal court. Okay, thank you.
But that is right. They don't have rules. Is that correct?
That's correct.
There is no rules. I would put it on record.
Well, no rule against, no rule against them in historic districts.
You're right. No rules. That's what I'm talking about. Yeah, okay, I just, City Council, I mean, City Attorney, you heard that, so, you know, you might, might be subpoenaed if somebody do it, okay?
Go ahead, Mr. Williams. Right. The historic district goes from Third Street on sixty-four up to where Bill Street is, that area over there, all around the Court Square.
I was asking, 'cause a lot of people don't know, they think it's just right around the courthouse.
No, it goes a little further.
And how far west it goes, you know, go to?
Regions on the other side. I don't know which street, but it's, it's more behind Regions too, also.
Okay, right, right, okay, okay.
Lafayette.
Yeah, right, 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 okay, okay.
So, but I'll, I'll run it through the, we can start that on that, and just, you know, have y'all handle it, but I just wanted to let y'all know, it's no, I, I learned something myself, 'cause I thought it was wrong too. All right, so that's all on my report. Was there any other questions? All right, that's all on my report. We'll move to public comment. Careb, have we got anybody? All right, that's Standing Committee reports. Under electric, the board met on the twenty-six, approved the purchase of a twenty-twenty-four pickup from Lonnie Cop, forty-nine thousand eight hundred and three dollars. The board was informed by TBA of a rate increase of five point two five percent. The increase will be for all meters read after October first, twenty-twenty-four. This increase will cost the average of four dollars to six dollars per month. BEA and NDS has reached a four thousand customer mark on internet sales. That completes BEA report. Moving on to utilities, Mr. Nutt.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Utility Board met September fourth last Wednesday. A two H has submitted an assessment plan for the lagoon to TDEC, which means it's on their desk, so they're rolling with it. We also approved the purchase of a new stereo camera that ours is outdated, and we received our second marketing assistance program payment of twenty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars that we used for the public awareness to promote eight-one-one, and the gas lines at New Hope and Smalley have been completed, and the gas price for the month of September is still at sixty-five cents. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nutt. Fire Chief Price.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My report. Total fire call last month was thirty-three. We had city, we had eighteen, had fifteen in the county. Training hour was two sixty-nine. Smoke, smoke alarm installed was nineteen, plus we did two safer wake alarm. Them alarm is for hearing impaired people that have hard time hearing smoke alarm going off, so we installed two of them in. Fire code inspection twenty-six, public relation event one. The mayor's talking, I want to invite you, all you guys, to our nine eleven program tomorrow. We've started breakfast at Backwood Restaurant. We will be leaving Backwood about seven forty-five, get to the station at eight. Program start at eight o'clock. Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday. We should, we should have you guys out, at least about, if it started at eight, you should be out about eight-thirty, something nine. We don't have a real long program. And just want you guys to know, August the thirtieth, when we went and had our first responding career day, it was a bit success. The kids, the staff, they really truly love it. Mayor, I just want to thank you, Chief Jones, and Mayor Polf, not here, thank you guys for furnishing Donut, for the staff and the people that came out. That's my report.
All right. Police, Chief Jones.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My report as follows. Castle Service six hundred and nineteen, citations a hundred and seventy-nine, twenty-eight accidents, none of them fatal, seven injuries, twenty-one property damage. We had forty-nine arrests, eighteen juvenile, thirty-one adults. Special events, we did a safe seat check, DUI saturation. We've had six of the safe, six of the Safe Street Task Force scheduled. We did career day with the fire department, sixty-five hours of training. Are you gonna do the surplus now, in case somebody has questions, or you gonna?
No, I'll wait, but, Mr. McKinnney.
Yeah, I was just gonna, is night out? Is it coming up now? Coming up, you know, night out?
We missed it. I was planning on doing one of the neighborhood parties on National Night Out, but it was last month, I think.
Okay, okay, okay. I just, I thought it was getting close to it.
I missed it. I, I got it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Next, Parks and Rec.
Evening, Mayor, Council.
Evening.
Parks and Recreation Department reports on the following. Last month, we worked on a couple of washouts out at Pleasant Creek Park, and there's a washout on the drive at, at the Kaboom at Northside Park that we've begun to work on. Tomorrow, we're gonna get back on it, as well as put, fill in some of the issues that's off in the inside of the playground area as well that need to be addressed. Adult exercise class, the line dance class continues Tuesdays only, five P M. Also, our adult pickleball is Monday, Wednesdays, Fridays, nine to noon. The adult men basketball league registration, we're gonna start that at the end of this month, the thirtieth, and we'll run it for about a month. Hopefully, we can get enough to participate this year. And lastly, our soccer league registration has ended, and the games will start in the one week, not two weeks from now. I think first game is September sixteenth. So if y'all wanna see some good entertainment, that's a fun league that will come out, and that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Ford, I was trying to think whether I should break you in tonight, asking a question about the school, something about the school system, but I'm gonna let you slide tonight.
Thank you, thank you, David. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Streets of sanitation, Mr. Mayfield. Say, tell, man, you're, you're not a schoolboy member tonight, I, city employee.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, barman heads, public, Jerry Mayfield, street sanitation, and we started our, well, we doing our trash pickup all around town like we normally do. We'd eaten everything, still going on. Our landfill was a hundred and twenty-two point three-three ton residential. Commercial was two hundred and ninety-five point three-eight ton, for a total of four hundred and seventeen point seven-one tons trash picked up, and they said I got thirty-six point seven-eight ton leaves. And I'm, I'm still trying to figure out where that come from, but anyway. Got bulk items. We start picking up October first, bulk items, and I'm showing a bid opening on dumpsters.
Yeah, we got dumpsters, probably just one bid, I don't know. Waste equipment, uh, nine, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars for eight yard dumpster. We have twelve thousand budgeted. It comes to ten thousand nine, ten thousand ninety-five dollars and eighty-eight cent. And what we usually do, if y'all don't mind, I usually call and ask them to give us another one, 'cause we have twelve thousand budgeted, so we usually try to slip one or two more in there within that twelve thousand budget. So, any questions on that, on that bid from waste equipment? Is there a motion to approve the bid from waste equipment for nine ninety-five, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars? Motion by Mr. Lau, second by Mr. Williams. We'll catch a vote. All right, motion, Care. Anything else that's lit there?
That's all I got. We're hoping, we're hoping it's taken care of also. I think Mr. Mayor's gonna bring it up.
We got an update on.
He's got an update on that here in a minute, and I'll let him take care of that, though. That'd be all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayfield.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Jessica's not here to, my, um, zone in, Mr. Watkins.
We need the mayor and council.
You should have a copy of my report. Building consultations, eight. Building permits written, three. Building inspections, four. Plumbing inspections, three. Mechanical inspections, three. Safety inspections, two. Issued three certificates of occupancy and thirty courtesy notices. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next, tourism, needed to development. Mr. Hill.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Mr. Hill.
For my report, I think I reported on this last time, 'cause it had happened, but it did happen in the month of August, so I added to my report again, the grand opening of the Timbers. And again, thank you to those that were able to come and those that sent regrets. We hosted a decades-themed concert at the Louise with Party Planet, and if no one else had a good time, your mayor had a wonderful time at the concert. He put on a great show. The, the band did, and the mayor did, so it was, it was a lot of fun, and we've got our next show this Thursday night. It's a tribute to Red Skelton, so it'll be some good clean comedy, and all of you are welcome to come and take part with them, sit upstairs with the mayor's tickets if you would like. Just get with mayor, him, and we can get that taken care of for you. What's that? Seven. Yes, sir. And then I did complete the capstone project for the T-SAD certification, and that graduation will be October third, so that, for myself and Careb, will be done.
Who's gonna be the comedian for Thursday night?
His name is Brian Huffman. He's a comedian, and he does a tribute to the old Red Skelton before my time, sorry. I don't, I'm not completely aware, but he does a tribute to Red Skelton, so it's good clean comedy, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Next, Historic Zoning, Ms. Miller.
Um, well, we had a meeting and we discussed getting new members, which we're gonna take care of this evening. We also, of course, discussed still working on the East Side market and that area and that project. And we're also gonna bring in our state rep for historical zoning to come and do a class with us. That's something Michael Miller said that they had done in the past, and we're gonna do that again. So we decided we might as well wait until our new members are with us, and I'm excited. Careb said that it's time for us to select a new chair with that commission, so we'll be doing that at our next meeting as well. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. All right, that's all the Standing Committee of reports. Next, old business update on the flood in Union and Neely. If y'all can recall, Mr. Rest, well, Mr. McClellan, call him Rest. Mr. McClellan came to our council meeting last month about that, and I know Mr. Wood's mentioned it, but we, I guess Friday, we, well, before Friday, I came by one day. I forgot what day it was raining, and I noticed that it wasn't much rain at all in that yard, his, that, not just his yard, but that whole area of Union and Neely was completely underwater. And I took, at the time, Eddie came with me, and we went over there and looked, and we was, he said that it had to be something that was stopped up or something inside of it, collapsed or whatever, so it, once it dried all up, I think Jerry went by, was it Friday? Friday, I think, Thursday?
Mr. Johnson called me Wednesday, and we went over and looked at it, and Thursday morning, we started ours.
Yeah, they found a king, well, he said, well, Jerry said a California king, but it was a mattress. There was a mattress in the, the drain, two, three tires, and truckloads and truckloads of just debris and trash, and just, I mean, it was, it was an awful amount of debris inside of it. We, they got all let out. They put one of our firemen, Tyler Rice, my Sarah's son, he got over into, inside the manhole and inside the cover with the fire department. Well, when they brought the truck, they dumped, I think, four thousand gallons of water in the thing. It didn't ever, it didn't touch it. It didn't move at all. It was stopped up so bad. But they got down and, and cleaned out the drain with the fire hose and got it all cleaned out. It started raining, I think, Friday night, and I left my house about nine, nine-thirty, went over there, and the water was wide open, flowing through the drains just fine. So it cleaned it out, and Mr. McClellan was real happy that he was, he was proud of it, so we're gonna keep watching it just to make sure, but it was just, just full of. One of the, the way that cover it is, it goes, it's two covers that go into one big cover, and it's like three that are, that connect right in the middle of that road there, and they were all just stopped up with trash, so unfortunately.
We could put some kind of bars or something there?
It is, but they, they slow down. The way those covers are, those are made to be open, because if you don't, it, all you're gonna do is put more debris wherever that, that grade is. So it's, now, it's grates in the road, right there, but the way, the way that water flow, it's just, it's trash from all over town that goes. When it rains, it gets wet, it waters, just water flows downhill and the trash flow downhill with it. It's like those tires and stuff, that one stuff from Rust's yard, that was stuff from just on the side of the road that has just got in there. It just became our issue when it stopped up the drain and under the city street there, so, but we'll try to keep a watch on it and try to keep that, you know, maintained over there.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you, because Kira Bowden, who bought that house on the other side, had, Mitch stopped me and asked me and said that she was trying to, it was an issue at her, at her house too, so I'll see her in a few days, and I hope she'll.
Oh, yeah, she was out, the whole neighborhood was out there.
Yeah, I couldn't go home. I was like, what's going on?
We had it all blocked off, and, 'cause we, he had a whole, whole load of people over there, and truck, actually, the fire truck, land truck messed up the road. It started sinking in the road, so we gotta go back over there and fix that, so it was a, it was an all-day deal on Friday, Thursday. It was an all-day deal. it was a all-day deal on Friday, uh, Thursday. It was an all-day deal, but they got it done and nobody got hurt, so, well, I don't know. All right, so that's update on that there, that ditch there. Uh, moving on to new, new business. Uh, approval of bank lending resolution twenty twenty-four zero zero nine, capital outlet note for the residential sidearm, uh, truck. What this is, as you know, we do the buyback program, so we're buying, we're selling the old, getting the new one, and the money we take from the, uh, the old one will go towards the capital, the balloon payment on this, uh, note here. So we do like we normally do and get the local banks to bid on, see who give us the, who gives us the best interest rate. And Simmons had the low, uh, rate at four point two, CBS was four point two-four, Centennial was four point nine-four, so my recommendation and request from the council is to approve the loan with Simmons at four point two-zero. Uh, a motion by Mr. Windsor, second. Second by Mr. Wood. Is there any questions? The interest? Simmons was four point two, CBS was four point two-four, Centennial was four point nine-four. And the motion is to go with Simmons, right? Simmons at four point two-zero. Any other questions? Uh, four hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty cent. Them trucks are expensive. Now, hold on, I'm sorry, that's what the loan is for. I don't know the, are you asking how much they giving us for the old one? Do you know that number? They have a number that's guaranteed, but usually what happens, we put it on gov deals and whatever, whatever they guarantee, we end up getting more for it. Um, I don't, I, I'll get that number to you, though. All right, if you will, catch your votes. Motion carried. Next, we got approved to sell po- polo, po- polo, police surplus equipment. Um, Mike, I don't know if y'all got the list or not, Mike has a list of, um, it's four, like, ex- explorers, they just sitting in the, sending it to impound right now, and, but we can't sell anything without the approval of the council first. Anything, I think, of a thousand, we have to get the approval to deem it surplus. Once y'all deem a surplus, he'll put it on gov deals or scrap it or whatever, and put it in his, uh, drug fund, general fund, or however he decides, so.
Do you sell it to the public, or you, it always has to go through?
We usually, yeah, well, it has to be sold at a public auction. We usually use gov deals, because we usually get more people, because there's more people that bid on it. Uh, we used to use, some things we used to do, we take it down to Leonard Jackson to have some stuff local, but I don't, he, well, you know, he's passed, but I don't know that they even doing any more auctions at all in, in it, so, go ahead, Mike.
I think it's about six vehicles. I gave you the list, but these are so far gone. They're most of them gone to str- scrap. Two of them, I think we have another agency might be interested in it, and they're gonna take two and put them together, but these were explorers we bought, used from people before they had police packets. So they, we got money's worth plus some out of.
Yeah, I was like, they have twenty-plus years left.
We used to sell them at auction, or we would now, Ford would buy a lot of the newer ones back from us for future purposes, but these, we were putting three and four thousand dollars in them at a time when they were going to the shop, so that was part of my maintenance budget. That was so huge.
The two that you're talking about putting together, what, what, your models are those? The two newer ones, do you know?
Can I say like old twos?
Okay, so they're, they're like the older ones.
Yeah, they're the old ones. They're the ones we got when Pat was here and we just bought those. No, they're the old ones.
Is there, uh, motion to approve all? A motion by Mr. Wood, second by Mr., uh, Mr. McKenna. Yeah, we don't want to say that then, but around here, they might be a little upset. It's on the limit. Motion carried.
Send it to members, government, the police will catch you, man.
We got appointment of two new members to our historic zoning commission, uh, Ms. Candice Schalkford and Mr. Michael Johnson. Both of these individuals have agreed to serve. I will ask for a, of approval to appoint them to that, uh, historic zoning commission.
Why don't y'all stand up so we can see who you are?
Oh, they're here?
Okay, Mr. Johnson, okay, nice, okay, nice to meet you, Mr. Johnson. He has the big, pretty white house on the left headed out of town with the flags, big tall, two-story house there.
Next to Camille's shop, the first one next to Camille.
Okay, okay.
And also is a teacher at Fayetteville High School, and we work together, and he just got teacher of the month, and it's his first year teaching.
Congratulations, well.
I second that motion.
How, who made the motion? Motion by Mr. Lau and a second by Mr. Golden. Uh, if you will, catch your votes. All right, motion carried. Thank you so much for being willing to serve, and we look forward to working with you. All right, next we have on the agenda, Mr. Bob Williamson, concerned with stormwater drain issue at three forty-two East, uh, Market Street. Mr. Wade?
City council and mayor, I wanna thank you for the opportunity, give me opportunity to, to present some information to you and how the it's on the agenda. I see it says at three forty-two East Market Street. I want you to know that's what prompted me to bring this information to you. This is not, I'm not asking for anything about three forty-two East Market Street, even though it's impacted. Uh, I believe you were given a packet of information. Carrie Beth, I think, took, uh, was kind enough to send that to you, and, uh, that should shorten time, but just, just in case, I've got some, uh, handouts here of, uh, that helps. Yeah, it's up on the monitors too, but, uh, you can leave this in front of, you can leave certain parts of it. This is the, uh, rainstorm system that, uh, I want to talk about. Now, uh, if you'll allow me to go over to the monitoring point, if you would. This is my property, three forty-two East Market Street, storage building here. I'm sorry. I don't trip over a wire. This is the storage business right here. And, uh, this, you'll see a blue line, a light blue line on your piece of paper. That is the location of, of the right away. That's where my south, by the way, this is pointing north. South of that blue line is my property. North of that blue line is gonna be the right away and the highway, and, uh, of course, properties north of there. Now, um, as y'all probably are aware, I, I know, uh, councilman Golden was actually there the day it happened. Uh, in front of this building, there is now a large sinkhole, and that sinkhole is a result of, uh, uh, the line, the red line that you see going up under the corner of that building. That is an extension from a manhole structure on my property. Okay. Here's, here's the information I wish to share is, as I was working to address this problem on my property, uh, I did a lot of research and also took some still in, uh, video imaging of, uh, what was down there, because, uh, from that manhole structure, there is two lines feeding into it from the right away. Okay. On the north side of the highway, you'll see on your piece of paper, it says, uh, says something about a box culvert, box culvert approximately fourteen foot deep. That is on the north side of the highway. It is a open box culvert. It has a grate on the top of it. It's fed by a water that is running down from west to east along the highway on the north side. But most of it appears to be coming from a drainage ditch that extends, uh, about three, three hundred and five degrees so north and slightly west of that, uh, culvert, that box culvert. And, uh, that ditch crosses private and, uh, city property, uh, and is fed by a large culvert that comes underneath Jackson Street and empties into this, this gully, deep gully. It's an open top gully, gully, or open gully. So most of the water seems to be coming from there. It empties into that, it's intended to empty into that box culvert. It goes down fourteen feet, and then there's a, uh, a line. I do not know what it's constructed of. I was told it was concrete. I don't know. But it extends under the highway, crosses all the way to my property into that manhole structure that you see on my property. Okay, at the manhole structure, it's seventeen feet deep. That's where most of the water's coming through that, uh, storm system that's on the right away, if you will. On the south side of the right wa- right away are two shallower, much shallower, box culverts. The one that is, uh, you'll see it, it says open drain number one on your, on your piece of paper. Uh, that's where that part of the underground part starts. So the water's draining down the south side of the highway, goes into, some portion of it goes into that open drain, goes underground along the south side of the right away. There's another open culvert, uh, that you see is, is, says number two. And then there's a line extends from that open culvert, again, crosses onto my property and goes into the manhole structure at a higher depth. Uh, it's about, uh, four to five feet, six feet, so from the opening of the manhole structure. Now, here's, here's my concern, is there's, as I've dealt with this, there's been a lot of assumptions made by all, uh, parties involved, uh, T-Dot, city, and myself. And, uh, what I have tried to do is spend time, uh, trying to, uh, clarify or dispel or confirm any of those assumptions, and what I'm prepared to do tonight is to present to you some, some, some of that, dispel some assumptions and question, bring into question possibly others. You may have questions at some point, so, uh, I'd be happy to try to, to answer those.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, maybe because you think people have already been discussing this or whatever, like you said, people already know what it is that you, I guess, are wanting or asking for the council, but can you lead with that? Like, what did it, what is it that you're looking for us to do?
Uh, I would say there was two, two things.
Okay.
One is, uh, uh, there is a sidewalk project. It's a multimodal grant for the north side, and it goes right over this drainage system, and that grant application didn't call for any movement of, uh, utilities. Uh, what I have found may bring into question that, that, uh, that position in relative to that sidewalk. My second concern is potential future liability, because there's been some assumptions made that if, uh, certain situations were to occur, it might be assumed that I am liable for those situations.
What are those assumptions?
Uh, one of them is, okay, you, you all are aware of baker's glass on the north side of the highway.
Right.
Okay, during certain heavy rainstorms, water floods that shop and has historically for some time. Uh, Cory's not here tonight. He said he was gonna try to make it, but, uh, uh, for some time prior to me even owning this property, there was flooding of that shop, so I, I didn't want Cory to assume that I was responsible for his shop flooding. That is based on the assumption that has been made by primarily T-Dot, that the blockage, the impediment to water is on my property. Okay? Uh, that assumption also affects the sidewalk project, because what I have found is there is an impediment prior to my property. Okay? If you, uh, if you look on, uh, your piece of paper, it's hard to see, but it says right away, right here. Right away for R O W blockage. I'm sorry, abbreviation for right away. I was able to put a camera down into the manhole structure and take pictures. You can you can hand that one here, but, uh, three of these, you can, uh, pass that around. This, this picture is placing a camera in the manhole structure. The camera had, uh, zoom ability, so I was able to zoom in. This is approximately twenty times zoom. And what you're looking at is debris that is in the channel under the right away.
And let me ask you this. So is this right away, is that T-Dot's responsibility or the city of Bolivar?
Uh, that's, that's
Million dollar question.
That, that, that's been part of the, uh, the debate, I guess you would call it, uh, and, uh, I've put in your packet what I have found. I can't answer that question. I can only tell you what I have found in references. Uh, it, it, we don't even know who put it there, to be honest with you. I, I have not yet been able to determine or find records, T-Dot or otherwise, as to who constructed any part or all of that. So, it, uh, best answer I'm giving you, uh, councilman, councilperson, builder, is that it probably was constructed by T-Dot, possibly might be a better answer, but their position, and it appears that state law says, once they do, that the city assumes responsibility. But, uh, that's, uh
So this needs to be cleaned out, is what you're saying?
I don't know that cleaning out is the right answer.
Oh, okay.
Because, uh, if you were to go down there and look, right, right above where that is on your piece of paper, says right away, there, you'll see a patch of gravel. Because what has happened is that has collapsed. At one point, it was ten or feet, uh, more deep. At, uh, at one point, it, it first showed as a depression, and it got deeper. They put gravel on top of it. It depressed again. They put more gravel on top of it, and then it caved in to a depth of about ten feet, and they filled that hole in with in that, that picture you may be see, see may be the gravel they poured in there, so I, uh, I don't think clearing it out is gonna solve the problem.
Whenever you say they put gravel in it, he put gravel in it.
T-Dot.
T-Dot. So they're putting gravel into a hole that they're saying that they're not responsible for anymore?
That's on your property, right? That sinkhole is on your property.
I'm not saying that, but I haven't heard those words.
They must have put gravel in it, right?
Yes.
Saying that once they put the culvert in, that, that they're done with it. So why don't they come back and put gravel in the hole?
I think that that means that they have, are assuming responsibility once they start doing things, right? Have you looked into this, Mayor McTusick?
Uh, we, me and, me and Bob have had multiple conversations, me, Bob, Jim, Jared, uh, Eddie, mo- all of us, and T-Dot has refused to, they have taken the stance that they're not responsible. Um, I don't see how they're not, um, because we don't do anything on state highways in the city limits, outside the city limits, and there's been multiple, like, they, if y'all, may, y'all may, may or may not remember, that was the issue in front of BP, uh, where that road was collapsing there. They came and fixed it. I mean, everything on the state route, they always do. As a matter of fact, they fuss at us if we go do stuff on the state routes. So why this is different, I don't know. Um, and like I've said, with, like, it's, this was an issue before it happened, but I, I don't know where our, um, the liability lies, because I'm not an attorney and I'm, I don't try to argue with T-Dot. I mean, they rules are, it's T-Dot, so I can't really tell you.
Mayor, who has spoken to T-Dot?
Who has spoken to T-Dot? Uh, all of us at the, we haven't, we spoke to, uh, what is his name? Boarding, board, what is the T-Dot? What's his name?
TJ Gordon.
TJ, yeah, so he's the local guy, and so he, uh, borders, and he re- he speaks to his upper group, and it just goes up, and that's how it comes down to us, so, um, but that's, any other time in the past when there has been an issue on a state route with But that's, any other time in the past when there's been an issue on a state route with drainage, so like that, that Union Neely deal, that was a city street. We never even spoke to T-Dot about it. Uh, anytime it's on sixty-four, any of the state routes, our call is to them or to him. And they handle it from there and fix it or don't fix it or whatever. In this situation, their stance, I don't know who. Bob, you remember that email, that lady, I guess it was a legal counsel or something that responded?
Jennifer Ivy, that is the, uh, staff attorney at Jackson.
Yeah, she said that the T-Dot stance is, they don't, it ain't their responsibility.
So did she, they came out, check it out, dropped cameras, looked in the manhole, I mean?
I believe so. I, Bob may know better than I do. If they did, they didn't contact me. Do you know, y'all, does any of y'all know that?
They did, they did come out in, with a camera crew and, uh, what I was told was that, uh, they, they first tried to look through. This end, this pipe comes out into a deep gully. And they put a camera in this end and said they couldn't see anything. Then they came back to the manhole structure and put a camera down in there. I don't know what equipment they used. And they claimed that about ten feet from that manhole structure, they hit an obstruction but couldn't see it. And your packet is a picture of that obstruction, so, uh, while my camera was able to do that and theirs couldn't, I, I can't explain that, but.
Have we sent these pictures and shut back to them?
Excuse me?
Have we sent these, these pictures back to them to show them?
They've, they've got them.
Okay.
Uh, all the correspondence that I've shared with, uh, the mayor and I've shared with Carrie Beth and, and T-Dot representatives as well.
And their chances still now, even after this all?
Last answer I got was their position hadn't changed, that they can't do any remedies on private property. But I wasn't, in that email, I was not asking for a remedy on my property. I was sent me pointing it out that a remedy on my property wasn't gonna solve the problem, that there was still gonna be blockage. Uh, so, uh, I, I can't fix this problem on my property. I can fix my problem to a degree. But I cannot fix the blockage that is on that right of way.
Is that perhaps the reason why the state is saying that they're not doing anything? I think this little, uh, light blue line, they're gonna go twelve feet from the fog line.
What I was told at one time was, uh, fifty feet from the center line. Uh, but when I first brought this up, T-Dot, uh, the area supervisor came out and painted a white dot on my parking lot and said, "We don't go past that point."
I just know they, you know, used to say that, uh, twelve feet from the, uh, I call it white line, fog line, without the fog line.
I like to say, I was told fifty feet, more than one, fifty feet from the center line, yes.
Center line, yeah, okay, center line. I didn't know if that was the reason why they're not doing anything.
Well, again, my concern is, uh, one concern is, is, uh, Baker's Glass flooding. And I, uh, right now Cory's been very, uh, understanding and patient, uh, and, uh, doesn't hold me accountable for that. But my sec, my, another concern is if there's flooding on the north side, it tends to flow across the highway to the south side, which means there's gonna be accumulation of water on that highway. Uh, this sidewalk project is a safety concern. I think a bigger safety concern is water accumulating on that highway.
That's why you would think the state would do something if it was coming across the highway.
I guess they waiting on highway falling in, right? Seems like called the highway.
That's a big, that's a big problem.
I know, but they don't wanna do anything about it until the road fall in, you know?
Mayor, do you have any suggestions?
Absolutely none. I, I mean, 'cause I don't, I'm, I, and we didn't, we, we've been, Bob was, we've been going back and forth about, well, we haven't been going back and forth, not that way, but just about trying to get help. Because it, we talked about this before that sinkhole and it didn't even happen. Um, and trying to help how we can, but I, I don't know what the fix is or how we address it, because it's on a state route.
And this is gonna be a big fix, this is.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's gonna be a big fix and the sidewalk issue. So we have the grant, the multimodal grant, the en- engineers and I, we, Bob, he's came and done a lot of research on, on that part of it. Our, our engineers, they're doing the design and all of that on the north side of the highway. Um, and I'm not aware, Bob may be aware, there's no, there's nothing in there that's gonna address any type of, or change any type of drainage. They're just designing, they're just putting the sidewalk on the north side.
The, the grant does include, uh, accommodation for drainage along the north side of the highway. It's a curb and drain, open drain arrangement.
But nothing under, nothing under the road. It's just putting the, like curb and gutter, I guess you would say. Um, but I, I don't, I don't know how we, I mean, 'cause I've never, and I don't know, I don't know that we have ever fixed anything on the state highway.
Could we maybe ask Mr. Spatter to maybe send a letter along with some of this information to the area manager or his manager? And see if we could get a second opinion or he says?
We, I, well, I'll let him say this, but I'm pretty sure the, they already got all this. But, but I'll say he's been very thorough in all of this. And the only second opinion would probably be a judge, but, I mean, I doubt, I doubt T-Dot's attorney has as much respect for Mr. Kevin as I do.
And all the reason why, he said that, that their council had sent us a letter.
Yeah.
You know, and so, I mean.
Well, no, their council was referring to Mr. Whit. And we, it's just about a conversation. We've all been in the emails, right?
But before I got the latest information, I, I did, uh, ask an attorney, uh, friend of mine, uh, to arrange a, a meeting with T-Dot in Jackson and we went and met with, uh, it was, uh, their attorney Jennifer Ivy and, uh, three operations people. One of them, Sam White, who is, uh, the area supervisor that painted the white dot on the parking lot. And, uh, I met with them and, uh, 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 just presented what I knew and they basically, their, their statement was, "The hands are tied."
Let me, let me guess. Oh, I'm sorry.
Out of that meeting, I got, uh, some email contacts. Anything I found, I've shared with them as, as well.
Let me ask this then, have any, have anyone spoke to Representative Shaw and Senator Wiley Page? I mean, they state, that's, that's what they supposed to do, represent us.
This first came to my attention back in two thousand eighteen. I think I let them know back then about it, but, uh, more recently, I have not yet.
This might be a good time.
This is a good time, so, yeah.
They looking for votes, so, you know, hey, go vote.
Well, uh, that's, that is a good suggestion, but
Yeah.
Uh, I would add to that, it would be helpful if this council would do the same thing. I, I, I don't know how to resolve the situ, I can fix my property to a limit. And let me explain what that is. That, that manhole structure is seventeen feet deep. It's not a reasonable solution for me to try to fix that culvert leading from that manhole culvert to the gully. It's not practical. You can see there's a building on top of it. I've probably lost that building anyway. But it's not practical. I've already been told by one contractor that at that depth, you're into, uh, OSHA requirements because of, uh, cave-in risk. So what I am allowed to do by, and let me add to that, let me lead into that by saying this. There are two basic views on, uh, who is responsible for stormwater, uh, stormwater. One is what they call a common enemy doctrine. And that means the upper landowner tends to be responsible for water that flows onto a lower man, uh, landowner. There's another doctrine called natural flow rule. And that's what Tennessee practices. And that says the lower landowner has to receive water from a higher landowner and deal with it. Okay, so that's, that's the basis now. Uh, legal cases and precedent is understandably have kinda blended those two. But what comes along with the natural flow rule is what they call riparian water rights. Which means once that water comes to my property, I have the right to deal with it how I choose, within reasonable choices. And the reasonable choice available to me is to go higher than seventeen feet deep and drain that water off to try to protect my property. What I'm required by law is to return it to the natural flow, which is gonna be that gully. So, when I can find a contractor, and this is part of my problem. Every contractor I've dealt with so far walks up to that manhole structure and says, "I can't do that. That's public works." And I have to convince them that it's not. And I have not found anybody yet willing to do it. But when I do, it's gonna be try to create some type opening at, in that manhole structure, higher up, probably at four or five feet deep in either a culvert or an open ditch that drains it off in a way that tries to, uh, protect as much of my property as I can. But when I do that, if I do that, when I do that, I still haven't solved the problem. Still got the blockage on the right of way. And I can tell you that, uh, I took that picture you see, August thirtieth. And when I took that picture, I've got video of it as well. There was water running off of that mound of debris you see, which means there's water being held behind it. And this was after a full month or more of no rain. So there, there is water backed up under that highway and holding there. That's how serious that blockage is.
Reason why I said talk to the, uh, state representative and the senator is maybe we need to start at the top. Governor, commissioner.
I understand.
Start to start at the bottom, these supervisors, they can only do so much, 'cause he got to call his supervisor, he got to call. No, let's go to the top. I, I'm just firmly, let's go all the way. So that's why I said talk, get with them. I'm just suggesting.
I understand that, but, but if, if it's just me alone, it comes across as I'm trying to get them to fix my property. And I, if I, if that's the only impression that's given, it still doesn't address the problem on the right of way. And when you start talking about that, that's out of my hands, so to speak. And it comes back to this disagreement between city and state about who's responsible for that.
Yeah, that, well, that's what I'm saying, not your property. I'm talking about, like you said, the right of way, that's a state, and that's a state road. So that's why I said maybe get with the.
Well, if you look in your packet, there is, uh, an Attorney General opinion that, that suggests once, once a, uh, project is, is finished by T-Dot, that, uh, the city assumes, uh, responsibility of administration.
I, I.
Well, I know, and I, and I, he, Bob, when he told me that, that was my, and I read it, but I, that may be the opinion, but that's not how we, I never have operated that way. Um, so I don't, I just don't, I just don't know. Uh, go, I'm sorry.
I think that this is, like you said, something that we should visit when we are in the construction of this new sidewalk and all of that. I think we should talk to the engineers and all those people and let them know. And then maybe they can also be involved with letting T-Dot know that for us to make this project be successful, we have to deal with this. Maybe that's the way we go, uh, because that's kind of really, I feel like the only thing we as the council can do as far as dealing with how it affects things that we have planned. And maybe we can tie ourselves, other than that, but you know, we're just saying, hey, help our constituent, you know what I mean? But if it's tied to a project that we have coming down the line and we already have engineers laying this out. So, um, I think that we should maybe try to tackle that and maybe we can revisit it with you, Mr. Williamson? After we see if that's a way to.
When I met with T-Dot in Jackson, uh, at that time, actually, that blockage under the right of way had, was to the degree that there was no longer a problem on my property. There was very little water coming in that manhole structure. So I repaired my parking lot, put everything back in shape, started renting that building out again. And about two or three weeks later, it washed through and, uh, got worse again, uh.
Well, I will get with, uh, I'm just gonna say, I'll get, get with Carrie Beth. We'll forward off, forward all the, uh, information to our representatives and so. But I'll just, I'll let you, to ask, to, your suggestion's a good idea, but we've all, our project won't be, our project's not even is, is not gonna be with that at all. And they've already went that route, but we'll try it again.
So how would?
Well, I'm just saying, 'cause isn't, we get, the sidewalk is gonna go over one of these culverts, right?
But they're, they, it's not gonna end up, that's, the issue is here.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know.
So.
Bob, so was you finna say something?
Oh, hey, I, I mean, the, from the purely legal standpoint, we don't really have a dog in the fight, for lack of a better word, of my personal professional experience in dealing with T-Dot and T-Deck. You gotta be careful what I say here on the record of. Once they form a position, the only way you're gonna get them to change that position is probably have to take them to court. I mean, that's just really what it's gonna come down to. Because from our city standpoint, you're dealing with private property in a state highway. We can't do the repairs even if we wanted to, because then T-Dot and T-Deck and probably who knows what other state agencies are gonna be down here. But I like your suggestion. Contacting your state representative and state senator and see if they can.
That's about the only way too.
Because.
We could do.
They would get a letter from us of basically, hey, can you help out a constituent? And they're gonna probably just throw it in the trash. Because, basically, why would they even respond to me? Because they're gonna say, well, you don't have a dog in this fight anymore. I mean, does that make sense?
No. Not from what I've read, not that.
So can we send a letter out to Paige and, and, and Shaw about this issue and see what, get their opinion or what?
I'll, I'll mention this. I did talk to Johnny.
No, I'm talking about can.
I know, I, I talked to Johnny Shaw just the other day and he offered to go ask T-Dot was going, I, please, I asked him, please hold off until after this meeting, so, uh.
I think we check with them two people first and then see what we can get rolling. You know, because they, they right there with the governor. They see him daily. Likely, I would say, you know, we'd just go up higher.
Feel like Bolivar.
Yeah, we gotta go up a little higher. And that's savor, like a shortcut and what.
Well, to, to the suggestion about going to court, I'm, I'm not gonna choose to do that. There's, it's, it's, uh, short of principle. I mean, I could fight it on principle, but I'd spend a lot of money fighting the principle. But justifiably, I, I can't do it. That, there's not enough revenue in that building uh, to justify the legal costs I would incur and on, to have a legal fight. I'm not sure I can win.
Yeah.
Mr. Williamson, just for me personally, I think the rest of the board, if you need any of us to reach out to Representative Shaw or Mr. Wiley, I don't think anyone would mind if this was called, you know?
I would appreciate that, but again, don't, don't, please don't make it come across as I'm asking that my property be fixed. I would enjoy that. That would be great. But my concern is my, me fixing my property is not gonna solve the problem.
No, they gotta fix that manhole and that water coming down the road. Then you can fix yours. Fixing yours ain't gonna do nothing but wash it away sooner than you do it. I looked at it and it looked like the cover done shift on the ground or something, you know, just looking at it.
Uh, I don't have, uh, pictures of, of what happened down there, but I, I do have some pictures that, uh, there is.
Tell me how old.
Well, it's in your packet.
So if we can send a letter to Johnny and Paige and then see what feedback we get from them, that'd be the, about the highest thing we can do.
Just talk, and be specific and, and point out that we're talking about the blockage under the highway.
The right of way.
Yeah, the right of way, excuse me. That, I mean.
That's your property, but.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, that's, you're right on that. They're, they're not gonna listen if they, they think they weren't talking about yours, but that's not, that's not the problem. It is.
Well, when I suggested that there was a collapse there, uh, I was told first that, uh, as soon as I fix my problem, that problem would go away. That it was, my problem was probably causing a softening of the ground. I don't know where that came from. And then more recently, the, when I said there was probably debris in there, they said that, that could be sucked in there from anywhere. I, I don't understand.
It's kinda like rusty stuff, you know, there's something, there's something in there, you know?
Anything else from council? We'll be, man, we'll be in touch and I'll get with Representative Shaw. I mean, well, I know me and you have correspondence between the next few days and just figure out, you know, best way to handle it from there. I'm sure this issue will be back on us, but, you know, I know Bob has, just to let y'all know, everything we've suggested, Bob has done his due diligence on for days, weeks, months, um, so, but hopefully we can get a resolution.
All right, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Anything else? Or the emotional, will you, sir? Most of our Mr. Kenneth, second by Mr. Williams, all in favor, say aye. I'm gonna get a poll.